Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Tenley Peterson, Chair of the Commission. Tonight, the Commission will discuss and vote on the following items: A use permit for the preservation and renovations of the Barcroft apartment buildings; An adaptive reuse site plan amendment to convert an office building to residential use with modifications; And an informational item on the green building incentive program. The performance parking pilot has been rescheduled to the December Planning Commission hearings. Presenters and speakers joining the meeting through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other electronic devices muted until you are called upon by the clerk. Please turn off sound to any devices around you to minimize interference and keep your cameras off until the clerk announces your name to speak. When called upon, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is in the meeting command bar at the top of your screen. The moderator nor the clerk have the ability to unmute your mic. Once you have spoken, please mute your mics and turn your camera off. If you are dialing in by phone to join the meeting, press star six to unmute. Public speakers will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration with an email confirmation is required to speak at tonight's hearing. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. All speakers, virtual or hybrid, will receive two minutes to comment as an individual. Only representatives of a county board-appointed advisory group, committee, and/or commission will receive three minutes to comment. A timer will be displayed on the screen if speaking virtually, and speakers in person will follow the timer stationed on the podium. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity, please reconnect to your by-phone. However, if you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide you with an audible 30-second warning to wrap up your comments. You will be muted when your time has expired. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for further information. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Tonight's meeting will be available for review through the YouTube platform. A link has been provided on the Planning Commission website 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Although the meetings will no longer be live broadcast, the meetings will be available for review with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1073, Verizon FiOS Channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website via a link to YouTube as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. I just wanted to acknowledge whether we have commissioners joining us online tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is that Commissioner Patel? Thank you, nice to see you virtually. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Yes, thank you. Our first item is FBCN 25-0006, a use permit for the preservation and renovations of the Barcroft apartment buildings. We have Olivia Sontag, our planning staff, to present this item this evening.
Hi, good evening. Olivia Sontag with the Arlington County Planning Division, and I'm joined by Melissa Danowski in the Housing Division and virtually by Mr. Gibson in Department of Environmental Services. So this is the seventh and final renovation use permit at Barcroft Apartments. And we will move through these quickly, and both staff and the applicant have a brief presentation prepared. So just to orient you all, here's the 60-acre property. The seventh renovation use permit is down here on the southern end. And you can also see in blue, just for proximity, where some of those new 100% affordable housing and the new market rate project is approved, just in relationship to all of the other renovation use permits. So here's the site within the Columbia Pike Corridor, and this is an excerpt of the general land use plan map. It shows the revitalization district boundaries in the black dashed lines as Note 24A, which is the neighborhood's conservation area, and it's also designated low-medium residential in the GLEB. This is the site within the Neighborhood's Form Based Code boundaries, and this is an excerpt of the central subarea plan, regulating plan map within the Form Based Code. The site's within the conservation area in that neon-green color, which envisions preservation of the existing buildings. So consistent with the general land use plan and the Neighborhood's Form Based Code, the applicant is proposing preservation and renovations to five buildings in this location. They are proposing to reduce the unit count just from 78 down to 77 units with a mix of one and two bedrooms. There are four private resident amenity areas outside, similar to other proposals you've seen. They're also asking for modifications to setback in parking requirements. This is just for those existing buildings that will remain and could potentially be non-conforming. And they're also following all floodplain management ordinance and resource protection area requirements for Dr.'s Run, which runs kind of north-south through the property. So as you may recall, during the review of the Barcroft Master Financing Development Plan, we acknowledged the location of this portion of the Barcroft property within the FEMA floodplain and floodway, and that further study of this area would be ongoing. So the county has coordinated with the applicant this past year, and the applicant has identified a suite of mitigation efforts to both comply with a floodplain management ordinance, as well as some additional voluntary efforts that do go above and beyond those minimum requirements. So those include limiting new planting and improvements in the floodplain, anchoring those any new improvements to prevent flotation, elevating any mechanical equipment and ventilation above the base flood elevation, flood insurance, and then this voluntary effort of converting one basement unit in building number 30 to a non-occupiable storage space, which is why you see that reduction in the total units to 77. But all other existing basement areas, in addition to this now non-occupiable storage face, are not going to be occupied by residents. The applicant has also filed an amendment to the adjacent property just south of here to also remove any two units that are below that base flood elevation, and that item will go concurrently with this item to the county board in November. So this item was reviewed by the Design Review Committee, the Historic Affairs and Landmark Review Board, the Form Based Code Advisory Working Group. It'll go to the Planning Commission just for a development summary update this Thursday, and we anticipate, again, taking this to the county board in November. And that concludes the staff presentation, and I'll pass it off to Ms. Riley for a very brief applicant presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sontag. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lauren Riley with Walsh-Kalouchi. We represent the applicant for this case, Jire Lynch Real Estate Partners. And tonight, joining me, we have Alice Hegeman with Jire Lynch and Jeff Krebs with BICA, our civil engineer and landscape architect for the project. We also have our other members from the design team as virtually as well, if we have questions for them. And as Ms. Sontag's bringing up the presentation, this is our seventh and final Barcroft renovation use permit. We're very happy to bring this to you, and very proud of what our team, as well as staff in the county, have accomplished over the past couple of years, bringing, you know, nine total applications before you all. As Ms. Sontag noted, the scope of this use permit is five buildings in what we affectionately call the tail of Barcroft. If we could go to the aerial side, the next one. These five buildings were constructed in the mid-1940s, and they contain about 25 one-bedroom units and 53 two-bedroom units today. You can see there, it's buildings 27 through 30. And as Ms. Sontag mentioned, a good portion of this site is located within a resource protection area, as well as regulatory floodway and floodplain. And so throughout this process, we've worked diligently with staff to mitigate any flood impacts to the site, notably...
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 3rd, 2025, meeting of the Arlington County Planning Commission. I am Tenley Peterson, Chair of the Commission. Tonight, the Commission will discuss and vote on the following items: A use permit for the preservation and renovations of the Barcroft apartment buildings; an adaptive reuse site plan amendment to convert an office building to residential use with modifications; and an informational item on the green building incentive program. The performance parking pilot has been rescheduled to the December Planning Commission hearings. Presenters and speakers joining the meeting through Microsoft Teams, please keep your phones and other electronic devices muted until you are called upon by the clerk. Please turn off sound to any devices around you to minimize interference and keep your cameras off until the clerk announces your name to speak. When called upon, you must unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone icon that is in the meeting command bar at the top of your screen. The moderator nor the clerk have the ability to unmute your mic. Once you have spoken, please mute your mics and turn your camera off. If you are dialing in by phone to join the meeting, press star six to unmute. Public speakers will be called upon by the clerk at an assigned time. Pre-registration with an email confirmation is required to speak at tonight's hearing. We are not able to accommodate additional speakers. All speakers, virtual or hybrid, will receive two minutes to comment as an individual. Only representatives of a county board-appointed advisory group, committee, and/or commission will receive three minutes to comment. A timer will be displayed on the screen if speaking virtually, and speakers in person will follow the timer stationed on the podium. Audio of tonight's meeting is available via phone. If commissioners, presenters, or speakers lose internet connectivity, please reconnect to your byphone. However, if you are dialing in by phone and unable to see the screen, we will provide you with an audible 30-second warning to wrap up your comments. You will be muted when your time has expired. The meeting chat is active for presenters or commissioners who need technical assistance only. Please do not use the meeting chat for discussion, public comment, questions about agenda items, or requests for further information. All public comments must be shared verbally for the record during the assigned public testimony period. Tonight's meeting will be available for review through the YouTube platform. A link has been provided on the Planning Commission website 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Although the meetings will no longer be a live broadcast, the meetings will be available for review with closed captioning on Comcast Xfinity Channels 25 and 1073, Verizon Fios Channels 39 and 40, 24 to 48 hours after the adjournment of the meeting. Lastly, this is a public forum. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website via a link to YouTube as stated. All information associated with tonight's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act requirements. I just wanted to acknowledge whether we have commissioners joining us online tonight. Have they joined us?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is that Commissioner Patel? Thank you. Nice to see you virtually. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Yes, thank you. Our first item is FBCN 25-0006, a use permit for the preservation and renovations of the Barcroft apartment buildings. We have Olivia Sontag, our planning staff, to present this item this evening.
Hi, good evening. Olivia Sontag with the Arlington County Planning Division, and I'm joined by Melissa Danowski in the Housing Division and virtually by Mr. Gibson in Department of Environmental Services. So this is the seventh and final renovation use permit at Barcroft Apartments. And we will move through these quickly. Now, both staff and the applicant have a brief presentation prepared. So just to orient you all, here's the 60-acre property. The seventh renovation use permit is down here on the southern end, and you can also see in blue, just for proximity, where some of those new 100% affordable housing and the new market rate project is approved, just in relationship to all of the other renovation use permits. So here's the site within the Columbia Pike Corridor, and this is an excerpt of the General Land Use Plan map. It shows the revitalization district boundaries and the black dashed lines as Note 24A, which is the Neighborhoods Conservation Area, and it's also designated low-medium residential in the GLUP. This is the site within the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code boundaries, and this is an excerpt of the Central Subarea Plan, Regulating Plan Map within the Form-Based Code. The site's within the Conservation Area in that neon-green color, which envisions preservation of the existing buildings. So consistent with the General Land Use Plan and the Neighborhoods Form-Based Code, the applicant is proposing preservation and renovations to five buildings in this location. They are proposing to reduce the unit count just from 78 down to 77 units with a mix of one and two bedrooms. There are four private resident amenity areas outside, similar to other proposals you've seen. They're also asking for modifications to setback in parking requirements. This is just for those existing buildings that will remain and could potentially be non-conforming. And they're also following all floodplain management ordinance and resource protection area requirements for Dr.'s Run, which runs kind of north-south through the property. So as you may recall, during the review of the Barcroft Master Financing Development Plan, we acknowledged the location of this portion of the Barcroft property within the FEMA floodplain and floodway, and that further study of this area would be ongoing. So the county has coordinated with the applicant this past year, and the applicant has identified a suite of mitigation efforts to both comply with a floodplain management ordinance, as well as some additional voluntary efforts that do go above and beyond those minimum requirements. So those include limiting new planting and improvements in the floodplain, anchoring those, any new improvements to prevent flotation, elevating any mechanical equipment and ventilation above the base flood elevation, flood insurance, and then this voluntary effort of converting one basement unit in Building Number 30 to a non-occupiable storage space, which is why you see that reduction in the total units to 77. But all other existing basement areas, in addition to this now non-occupiable storage space, are not going to be occupied by residents. The applicant has also filed an amendment to the adjacent property just south of here to also remove any two units that are below that base flood elevation, and that item will go concurrently with this item to the county board in November. So this item was reviewed by the Design Review Committee, the Historic Fares and Landmark Review Board, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group. It'll go to the Planning Commission just for a development summary update this Thursday, and we anticipate, again, taking this to the county board in November. And that concludes the staff presentation, and I'll pass it off to Ms. Riley for a very brief applicant presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sontag. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lauren Riley with Walsh-Kaluchi. We represent the applicant for this case, Jire Lynch Real Estate Partners, and tonight, joining me, we have Alice Hegeman with Jire Lynch and Jeff Krebs with BICA, our civil engineer and landscape architect for the project. We also have our other members from the design team virtually as well, if we have questions for them. And as Ms. Sontag's bringing up the presentation, this is our seventh and final Barcroft renovation use permit. We're very happy to bring this to you and very proud of what our team, as well as staff in the county, have accomplished over the past couple of years, bringing, you know, nine total applications before you all. As Ms. Sontag noted, the scope of this use permit is five buildings in what we affectionately call the "tail of Barcroft." If we could go to the aerial slide, the next one. These five buildings were constructed in the mid-1940s, and they contain about 25 one-bedroom units and 53 two-bedroom units. Today, you can see there, it's buildings 27 through 30. And as Ms. Sontag mentioned, a good portion of this site is located within a resource protection area, as well as regulatory floodway and floodplain. And so throughout this process, we've worked diligently with staff to mitigate any flood impacts to the site. Notably, Jire Lynch is voluntarily removing one basement unit from Building 30 from the project, converting that unit to non-occupiable storage space. We'll be doing the same with Building 32 and the use permit to our south there. And even with the removal of the three units, Jire Lynch is still committed to providing the total 1,335 units across Barcroft, and will make up those units in other sites. And so we've also been able to mitigate flood impacts by elevating mechanical equipment and vents above base flood elevation and generally limiting improvements to the site. This project includes fewer improvements than you've seen in previous use permits. And here, I won't read through the exhaustive list of renovations. We'll suffice it to say this is very similar in scope to the prior renovations that you all have seen. Cleaning and repairing brick, repairing slate roofs is needed, removing and replacing mechanical systems in the existing buildings and replacing fixtures. Of course, this is all the exterior renovations will be going on concurrently with interior renovations to improve conditions there for our Barcroft residents. And then we will continue to request the option to have residential canopies over the residential entrances and cladding over the exterior, though we will continue to apply for a waiver with Virginia Housing for those, and are optimistic in being successful with that. And then briefly show you our illustrative landscape plan here. We are proposing, similar to prior renovation use permits, we have four proposed resident amenity areas there, kind of tucked in between the buildings 27 and 28, 29, and 31. We'll have limited improvements where we are within the resource protection area. These are mainly areas designed to allow residents to gather and congregate and provide some additional landscaping and buffer from the surrounding roadways. With that concludes our presentation, and our team is available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So as Ms. Sontag mentioned, this is the seventh and final renovation for the Barcroft site. We have seen more or less these presentations six times before, I think we were saying, and very similar reports. So I think this is all very familiar to most of us at the DIAIS. So why don't we start off putting together an agenda if people do have questions? Many of them may have already been addressed at previous meetings, but is there anything folks want to add or discuss tonight? No? Okay. Well, I mean, I think that's a testament to the fantastic work that you have been doing all along. Thank you very much. Can we go to motions? Is that...
Sure. Can I make a comment, and then I'll make a motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. All right. We did hear this at the October Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group. As you've alluded to, this is the seventh and final use permit that we've heard on this. A couple things, I think both were mentioned in the staff report. So we did talk about, you know, that there's a lot going on at Four Mile Run Interior and 16th Street. Fortunately, when the construction will begin, the building will be vacant, so that will help. But it's just a tight intersection. That's what it is. There's only so much mitigation you can do. We also talked about the fact that it is within this resource protection area. So again, as Ms. Sontag was saying, the buildings are going to remain where they are. There's only so much we can do because we need to respect, you know, the natural environment that's there. Generally speaking, again, and as you know, because we have some new colleagues on the DIAIS, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group advises the county manager, so we don't take votes like a subcommittee, but very strong support for this use permit and that group. And then I'll just add my personal note here. This is very exciting because it's the last use permit, and I just kind of want to take a step and, or take a moment and just, you know, contextualize this. We talk a lot about affordable housing in these meetings, all the things we need to do. This is a huge accomplishment for our community and for Jire Lynch. We're in a really challenging time right now economically, from a development standpoint. I think it says a lot that they are fulfilling this commitment they have made, which is a very long-term commitment to, you know, enhance those buildings that are going to remain, and then obviously pursue additional housing on the site. So that continues, I think, I think we're, it's easy to take this for granted that this continues. This really is a major accomplishment that we should all be really proud of. It's, this is a housing effort that's going to outlast all of us. So anyway, I'm very excited to see this move forward, and I will now make a motion. So I move that the Planning Commission...
Burkie, can I actually, I did not ask if we have public speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I assumed that we didn't, so we don't. Okay. Please go ahead with your motion, Commissioner.
I'm happy to move forward. Okay, so I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the county board approve the subject use permit in accordance with the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form-Based Code, Article 11.2 of the Zoning Ordinance Appendix B, for preservation and renovations of the Barcroft Apartments Buildings Number 27 through 31, located within Sections 3 and 4 of the overall apartment complex, with modifications pursuant to the Columbia Pike Neighborhoods Form- Based Code for setback in parking requirements associated with the underlying zoning district for the existing buildings to remain subject to the conditions of the staff report.
Okay, thank you for your motion, Commissioner Burkie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Striner, seconds. Okay, would you like to speak more to your motion?
No, I think I pretty much said it all.
Okay, and so then we will go to a vote. Commissioner Lantelme?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel online?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkie?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Amadeo?
It's working. Oh, it's working. Oh, aye.
Okay. And I also say aye, so that passes unanimously. Commissioner Burkie, are there any other motions in the group?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you again to staff and the applicant for the work. I think Commissioner Burkie summarized how excited we all are about this project and it continuing to move forward at this time, so thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call the next item, please?
Item number two is SPLA 25-00029, an adaptive research reuse, I'm sorry, site plan amendment for Site Plan 153. We have Emma Martin, our site plans staff, to present this item this evening.
Hello. Give me a second to pull up my presentation. All right. Hello, I'm Emma Martin with the Department of Community Planning, Housing, and Development, and I'll be presenting the 1320, ignore the typo in my first slide, North Courthouse Road Adaptive Reuse Project. This item consists of an adaptive reuse site plan amendment to convert the 1320 North Courthouse Road office building to residential use for up to 296 units, with some ground floor office and retail uses with modifications. The site's subject to Site Plan Number 153, which comprises of two office buildings, 1320 and 1310 North Courthouse Road. This amendment applies to the existing nine-story 1320 North Courthouse Road building and a portion of the 1310 building, where there's an existing building connection that will be removed. Adjacent properties include the Avalon Courthouse Place to the west, Cortland Towers to the south, a government building to the north, and 1310 North Courthouse to the east. Site Plan 153 was approved in 1979 for 1310 North Courthouse Road, which is also known as Office Building 1 for this site plan. In 1989, a site plan amendment was approved to add Office Building 2, which is the subject building. The 1989 amendment also added the 5,022 square foot public plaza known as Verizon Plaza to the site plan. Office Building 1 was constructed in 1983, and the subject building was constructed in 1991. The parcels subject to this application are zoned CO, and the applicant's not proposing any changes to the existing zoning. The CO zoning district corresponds with the high office apartment hotel GLUP designation. The subject site is not located in the Courthouse Square Special District, but it is bordered by the District to the north. The site plan meets the recently adopted adaptive reuse amendment criteria of the zoning ordinance, which allows for this type of use conversion special exception process. The process was established as part of the adaptive reuse policy, which was adopted in response to the urgent challenges facing the county resulting from declining commercial office sector and presence of a large office supply of obsolete office space. As outlined in the policy, chronically vacant buildings put a significant strain on communities, including negative impacts on local economic activity, neighboring property values, overall quality of place in the public realm, and the county's fiscal health. Therefore, a core principle of the adaptive reuse policy is that repurposing obsolete office buildings is a public priority. While emphasizing the urgency of implementing a streamlined approach for the review of adaptive reuse applications, it also acknowledges a potential need for policy trade-offs between meeting current county standards and ultimate project viability. In addition, other adaptive plans and policies applicable to the site include the 1993 Courthouse Sector Plan Addendum, which outlines goals and recommendations, including but not limited to creating a government center surrounded by a balanced mix of plaza and high-density residential and office uses. The Courthouse Sector Plan Addendum Concept Plan identifies the subject site as the Bell Atlantic Block, which is designated for higher-density commercial/residential/mixed use, which is consistent with the proposal. There are no site-specific goals in the Courthouse Square Addendum of the Sector Plan, since this is located just outside of the Special District. The Arlington County Retail Plan identifies 14th Street as a blue street typology, which recommends retail and retail-equivalent uses and 50% ground floor transparency. The applicant's proposing 2018 square feet of retail along the corner of 14th Street and the public plaza to comply with the previously approved site plan conditions, which required retail along the plaza. The proposal includes conversion of the existing nine-story building into a 10-story building with up to 296 residential units. They're proposing one new penthouse level, along with amenities on the roof, which will add 22 feet to the building site for a total of 165 feet, and will add approximately 8,659 square feet of an increase in GFA, which is permitted per the adaptive reuse policy and zoning ordinance Section 15.5.9, as the increase is to provide residential amenities. The applicant's retaining the existing below-grade parking garage and providing 262 parking spaces at a ratio of 0.8 spaces per unit, and they'll also have an additional 417 flexible parking spaces. There will be extensive facade changes to create unit balconies and some terraces. The applicant's requesting modifications for additional density, residential parking, compact parking, setbacks, density exclusions, and driveway requirements. The slide on the left shows the existing North Courthouse Road plaza frontage, and the right is the North Beach Street frontage. Here, we've got 14th Street North on the left and 13th Street North on the right. So the left here is the, the right here is the proposed plaza or North Courthouse Road frontage, and the right shows the proposed North Beach Street frontage. Staff conducted community outreach at the beginning of the public review process to the following groups, which included Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall, Clarendon Courthouse Civic Association, Radnor Fort Meyer Heights Civic Association, and all the rest of the condominium and apartment complexes listed on the slide. In addition, we sent the plans to the National Capitol Planning Commission, though they are furloughed, to my understanding, so they did not provide any comments back. The Clarendon Courthouse Civic Association is supportive of this project, though they would have preferred a larger redevelopment project. The Radnor Fort Meyer Heights Civic Association had concerns about a previous iteration of the proposal, which had an architectural fin and two levels of penthouse and a maximum building height of 180 feet. But since then, the applicant amended the request to remove the fin and one story of penthouse, which brought the height down to 165, and that's below the permitted maximum height for the zoning district. We also created a project webpage that had links to applicant application materials and a video presentation that the applicant made. Like I mentioned, one of the goals of the adaptive reuse policy was to provide a more streamlined review process, to be responsive to the changing commercial market. Therefore, they don't undergo the same typical major site plan review process, as their focus mainly only on the change of the use of the existing building. The scope of this amendment focuses mainly on changes to facade, internal programming of the building, rather than streetscape, site, and landscaping elements. Therefore, we ask that you consider the use conversion within the context of this policy and the appropriateness of the proposed changes, specifically as it relates to the proposed uses, building exterior, ground floor elements, and parking. This proposal is consistent with the adaptive reuse policy, which identifies the repurposing of obsolete office space as a public priority that may necessitate policy trade-offs in meeting current county standards or other identified goals. The proposed conversion from vacant office to residential uses revitalizes the block with new housing opportunities near the Courthouse metro station. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of the ordinance to permit this adaptive reuse project.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now we have a presentation from the applicant.
We do. Nicholas Cummings with Walsh-Kaluchi here on behalf of the applicant Quadrangle. We're excited to bring you this adaptive reuse application, and even more excited to be the first project to be considered for approval within the timeframe that the original policy document for this process established. I think we submitted this in July, and we're here in November, which is a big victory, not just for us, but for the county as well. This would not have been possible without a strong commitment from staff to work with us throughout the process to address a litany of technical challenges. These projects aren't easy, and we went back and forth over what could and couldn't be considered as a part of this adaptive reuse application specifically, and had to pivot multiple times. We discovered challenges with the actual renovation itself, which is, of course, not uncommon in these projects at all. Emma Martin, in particular, deserves our thanks for her hard work on this project. The project will be a great addition to the community, turn a nearly vacant office building into homes for hundreds of new residents just steps from metro rail access at the bottom level of this very building. We also have a very large parking garage at this site, more than we need for this building, and will work over the coming months to find productive uses for that as well, including making parking, public parking available for employees of other businesses, or potentially even government agencies nearby, or offer overflow parking to tenants of neighboring buildings that might have lower parking ratios as well. Repositioning the building will give it a long, new productive life, bring in a lot of new tax revenue for the county, and help provide desperately needed housing right where people want it most, close to transit, employment, and a number of great businesses in this area. Even more broadly, this entire neighborhood is continuing to transform and grow, the Courthouse neighborhood right around the metro station here, and we're excited to add to that, too. Bob Knopf here is going to give a brief overview of the project design.
Sure. Bob Knopf with Quadrangle Development. I want to echo Nick's statement and thank staff for their support and help over the past couple of months. It's been, you know, it's been a rocky road, but we're here, and so I appreciate it, and a lot of hard work from staff. And I will also note that, you know, response times and things like that have been awesome, so thank you. I'll run through these kind of quickly because a lot of them were in the staff report. So, sorry, the first slide here is just to kind of give you a little orientation. To the north, we have 14th Street. Working our way around, we have North Courthouse Road, where the existing entrance to the building is located. That is shared currently with 1310. As you come around the building, 13th Street, not much there. We have some parks in public access up to the plaza level, and as we come around Beach, there's loading and parking garage entrances. Next slide. So we'll start at the P1 level, and essentially, Beach is about a story below grade due to the topography. There's a pretty steep slope over from 14th Street going down the hill there. The parking entrance and loading dock entrances are essentially the same. We are expanding the loading dock to have one additional bay, and then working around the building to the north there. There's an existing secondary lobby that serves, or will serve tenants to primarily go to the metro and shops and things, so we're going to make some renovations to that. Working our way around, basically, the rest of the parking garage is essentially staying the same. We are adding an additional bike room on the plant south. Next slide. So moving up to the ground floor, which is the plaza level, starting at the building entrance, existing entrance is going to remain. Working our way to the right, there is an existing pedestrian connection between 1310 and 1320. We will be removing that connection. The majority of the ground floor will be amenity spaces, some existing amenities, so fitness center and things are going to stay, and we're adding 24 residential units. 20 of those will be two stories with lofts, and it's hard to read, but on the bottom-left corner, you'll see, note the existing office space. That is Verizon. It is in, they're our only tenant in the building, and it is just a switch room, so there's not actually anyone out there. And then the space on the upper-left corner is our potential 2,000 square foot retail space. Next slide. So this is just showing those lofts for the ground floor level, taking advantage of the high ceiling So this is just showing those lofts for the ground floor level, taking advantage of the high ceiling heights for the, for the ground floor from the previous office use. Next slide. Typical floor. We have 20 apologize, 34 units. And then you'll notice in the core, because the building is a little deeper than a typical office space or office apartment building, we are converting some of the interior spaces to amenity as well as residential storage throughout the floors. Next slide. Going to the penthouse, we have some very exciting pickleball courts on the exterior. And then working our way around, we have a vegetable garden, kids play area, outdoor grilling area, a club room with the exterior area, outdoor pool, and then restroom and locker facilities. Next slide. So this is just a building section showing the existing six floors below grade for the parking garage and the nine floors, as well as the existing penthouse. To the right and left on the top, you can see the area that we are adding for the amenity space. Next slide. East elevation here. I can get them through these. Next one, please. North elevation. You can see the topography. The west elevation noting the parking and loading entrances. Next slide. And then the south elevation, one thing to note here is the loading dock is actually that you're seeing in that picture is 1310. So that's the neighboring building's loading dock. And then that area with the tan color is actually our new pool amenity area. Next slide. And this is just the original view you guys saw of the entrance coming in off courthouse. Close up of that entrance at night. This is the courtyard between 1310 and 1320. Note we're the two story space there. And we're also setting back the facade to have some interesting balconies and entrances for those apartments. Next slide. This is just a view from 14th Street, looking back at the building. Think one real thing to note here is that the pedestrian experience is really, we're really looking to update the existing planners and things like that. And we'll be working with staff separately on submitting a plan for landscape and hardscaping improvements throughout the space, throughout the building, both the motor court entrance to the building as well as the public streetscapes. Just closer up. Next one. And this is over on 13th Street, looking back. And then this is our sort of view from the DC, I'll call it, of the building at night. So it has a fairly open view all the way down to the Capitol. So it'll be a very iconic corner for the building. And then this is just a shot of the exterior rooftop. And that is it.
That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers? We have Stuart Stein to speak on this item.
Hello, I'm here today representing the Radnor Fort Meyer Heights Civic Association. And first I wanted to thank the applicant for addressing our concerns about the view shed from the Capitol. We fully support the resulting project and the idea of adaptive reuse. I also want to thank the staff and the staff of the Specials Gup Study for listening to our concerns and standing up for the importance of our responsibility to the nation's Capitol and the thousands of people that visit it from all over the country and throughout the world. Stan Carson, our president, wanted me to remind you of his deep concern for that responsibility and the strong positions that RAFM has taken supporting it since we were first formed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any commissions to speak to us tonight?
No, we don't.
Okay, and Transportation Commission would not have heard this. And we do not have a committee chair report, since this is adaptive reuse, so we will open this up to discussion. I will go through our standard agenda items. Please let me know if you have questions related to any of them, and then we will go back and have our discussion on each item. So site location, land use and site design. Okay, building form and architecture. Tony? Yes, okay. Transportation.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Sustainability and biophilia. Okay. Public spaces. Oh, okay. And community benefits. We do not generally have community benefits, since this is an adaptive reuse and there are not mitigants. Commissioner McGivern? Okay, perfect. And then process phasing and construction. Okay, so we're doing our usual agenda, I think, which is great. Okay, building form and architecture. Commissioner Striner, did you want to start off?
Yes, so the public comment spoke to this, but I want to confirm that this new design does not interfere with the view sheds per the recommendation from the National Capitol Planning Commission from a few decades ago, right?
So the proposed height is below the height per the zoning ordinance and the national mall axis. That's 180 feet is like the height of concern and this is 165, so it falls under that permitted height per that ordinance.
So you're not going to see it poking up above the Lincoln Memorial anymore. Okay, I see the head shaking. No, so that's good. I just wanted to confirm that. And then
Can I just ask a follow on, since the height is usually an average, so at no point would it be above the 180?
Yeah, I think kind of what you're getting to is the difference between like absolute height from sea level versus, you know, the height from average site elevation. We did include, I think, an updated rendering too, that would show the relationship of the building to the monument core. And I think it passed that sort of initial gut test. Obviously, this is a sort of soft determination too. It's not a firm law or anything. It's about how do you relate to those important resources? And I think that we clearly, especially with this change, relate to them in a positive way.
Thank you. Ms. Sontag?
And I'll just say that the revision to eliminate the rooftop features did help. And they obviously took our recommendation and the civic association's recommendation, so we were happy with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Striner?
Thank you for that. And my second piece is, forgive me if this was mentioned, but could you have a breakdown of what the unit mix is going to be for these 296? Are those three bedrooms I see? That's very exciting. All right. Glad those are on there. Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, any other building form or architecture? Commissioner Amadeo? Do you have your microphone on? Is it on now? Okay.
I was just, I mean, this is the first time I've seen the building. It seems like it has a lot of glass and I'm not sure it's addressing the different orientation and the sun exposure, sun path. And I don't know if that was, there was a presentation on that.
So, let me take this. So one of the challenges of this project in particular is the existing steel structure. So in order to make the new facade work, we're actually doing a curtain wall system that is mounted out past the existing slab edge. So the, what you see is actually a combination of, you know, glass that you're not going to be able to see through. And then obviously glass that's you're going to see through, but it is an all glass system.
So it's a combination of spandrel and an actual glass. Is it operable?
There are operable portions, yes.
Okay, I just couldn't, because it looked so uniform all across. And I don't know if there's any articulation based on where the sun is going to hit it.
There is not necessarily articulation for the sun specifically, but there is articulation, obviously, in the facade.
Okay, and are there any mitigation measures for the HVAC load that's going to require for that? I'm just, I don't know if this was addressed.
If the what? I'm sorry, the
HVAC or the
Yes.
Necessary for all of
It will be according. Yes.
And so I'm just wondering if there's a way to make some of that more green by, are there solar panels coming? Because it's a lot of western exposure.
Sure. You know, one of the, one of the challenges and specifically for an adaptive reuse or an office building conversion like this is the depths of the units. So, you know, a typical apartment unit is 28 feet deep or so. If you look at ours, we're pushing 10 feet further than that in some cases. So, you know, really maximizing the light into the units to have these bigger units is really important to the project and success of the project.
Also, the glass is going to be very reflective. Have the neighbors been alerted to some of that? I mean, I'm just wondering if any of the neighbors are aware of the reflectivity of the glass with all the sun.
So as a part of our outreach, as I mentioned, I
I'm just asking questions.
Yeah, I emailed every neighboring condo and civic association and apartment complex and they have access to the plans. I know some of them watch the
They're not going to know about that. Some of, some of the neighbors will be surprised about the reflection. So I'm just wondering if this, the glass is going to have some of the low E and low reflectivity and all of that. Just
They have the opportunity to review the materials.
Thank you. I have a question that I think is related to architecture, which is just interesting and cool to see the pickleball courts on the roof. Do we have guidance as a community about like the fencing and the height of the fencing? Just to make sure balls don't go over and land on people who will be hanging out in the kind of courtyard area?
So we've, I've unfortunately done a lot of Googling on this in the past weeks. So, so we're thinking it's going to be more of like a net to keep the balls. We don't plan on lighting it, so there won't be any exterior lights or things that neighbors have to worry about, blinding them, shining in their bedrooms. But we're thinking it's really a simple, almost like a fence-like structure, but with more of like a mesh netting that you can kind of see through.
Okay, so Ms. Sontag, there's not like regulations about the height? If you put sporting equipment on the roof, like I know when we talked about doing that with one of the APS buildings, I think we discussed it. There was
Structure. Good afternoon, Matt. Good evening, Madam Chair, Matt Pfeiffer with the Planning Division. There's a general regulation for a restriction of no more than 23 feet above the main roof height. So as long as they're within that, then that would be allowed.
Okay, okay. So then moving on to transportation. Commissioner Lantelme?
Yeah, the only question I have about the parking is with the flex spaces. Are those going to be open to the public or be able to be used by, if any other buildings get built, that they could share the parking?
So I think the short answer is we're open to whatever may become of the space. We certainly have a surplus of about ton of parking. We're certainly looking to do something to bring in some additional revenue.
Okay, great.
I don't think we have necessarily, you know, a lease sign or anything like that to speak to it, but we're certainly open to those things you just suggested.
I'll put a plug in too, because this is, I think, pertinent to the planning commission as a policy matter. I was taking a look at the zoning ordinance, evaluating this early on, like what can we do here? Because we also had some creative thoughts about maybe, you know, approving some conversion of some portion of it to retail that would only be triggered if we ever pulled a building permit or something like that, because converting that gross floor area right now doesn't cost anything. But in the future, we would never do it because we'd have to pay the county for it. It's not even that clear that a commercial parking lot that's open to the public, even within this building, would be legal in most mixed use districts in the county. I do think that if we were sharing parking directly with another building, that could be a different situation. But it's not as clear as it should be probably, especially with these projects coming through. I put in an email with the ED and just explained to them what I saw. And so at some point, perhaps we'll get a little bit of clarity there. But yeah, I would love it if we did.
Yeah, great. Parking neighbors. Yeah, from a policy viewpoint, I agree with you. I think we have a lot of potentially surplus parking up and down the commercial, what are the, consider the commercial corridors, the metro corridors. And it's expensive and wasted space if it isn't used at some point for something. So I really would welcome creative ideas that would allow that to be converted into usable, rentable space rather than something that's just sitting there. So, thank you.
Yeah, self-storage is another idea.
Ms. Martin? As a follow on to Commissioner Lantelme's question, we last month heard an adaptive reuse project. And Mr. Schultz, who was looking at that, checked the site plan conditions for that site and said, there's nothing restricting the applicant from being able to rent out the parking spaces. So is there something different about the site plan condition? Or if Mr. Cummings is saying he's, it does sound like he's saying he's not sure that that would be allowed?
It's the zoning ordinance and the use table, so it goes beyond the site plan conditions. But it depends on how the exact use is characterized and interpreted by the zoning administrator as well. And this was an initial look. It's not something we're proposing right now. But I do think that it could be easier and clearer. Because if I, if we're going to go out and open, you know, start to truly try to lease these spaces to the public, advertise, invest money in making that possible, we need some confidence that it's not somehow an unpermitted use.
They'll have flexibility if they want to file a site plan amendment later on to address what they'll do with those spaces. And they can think, think through more what they might want to use them for.
And that would be a minor site plan amendment, so it wouldn't have to come back to us.
It would depend what their request is ultimately, but that would probably be minor in nature if it were just about parking.
Yeah, okay, great. Other transportation questions? Okay, then we will move on to sustainability and biophilia. Commissioner McGivern?
I really liked seeing that you have a vegetable garden and a roof. That's a really nice added touch. I know because these adaptive reviews, reuse projects are streamlined in the process. You don't, we don't, you don't have all of the sort of requirements that you do for other. But can you tell me, do you have any EV charging or energy efficient appliances? Any green elements that you'd like to highlight?
Yeah, so I would say we're a little early on some of those items in terms of selecting specific appliances and things of that nature. But I mean, generally, we intend to use, you know, Energy Star. There is existing charters already in the building, actually, from the previous tenants. So we would just reuse those. I don't know if you have any other specific questions?
No, I just wanted to know if there's anything else. I didn't see anything on the report or your presentation. So I wanted to see if there was anything missing.
And, you know, the, obviously, the new facade will be much more efficient than the 1990s glass. And so we're really updating all the mechanicals. The only thing that's remaining is a cooling tower, for the most part, that's been replaced recently. So it's a newer cooling tower. So, you know, in general, the building is going to be substantially more energy efficient.
That's great. Happy to hear. The only thing I wanted to mention for staff, given again, this expedited streamlined process, the next item we're going to hear is about the green building initiative policy. And so I'm just thinking, just for you guys to go back and I know we're trying to maximize housing and, you know, turn these sort of use, these buildings that are being used into. But I think it's important for us to assess the trade offs between sort of the economic viability, getting more housing, and also some of our greater standard, green building standards that we want to promote. And later on about, I'm going to mention about community benefits too. But that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Striner?
On that thread, you mentioned the mechanicals would be replaced. Does that include, will that include things like electric heat pumps and electric backup generators potentially in the mix?
Yes.
That's very exciting.
Generator be replaced, all the heat pumps throughout the building. Yeah, so the, it will all be electric.
I'd love to hear that.
Proposing. There will be gas service to the building. It'll primarily be for the boilers. So it's not going to be a central hot water system. It'll be a, you know, each individual unit will have their own electric hot water heater, but it will serve some amenity spaces. So, you know, fire pits and things like that. And then it'll be a reheat for the, for the building loop. We'll have gas.
Is there any reason why gas was being used in the many amenity spaces and Is there any reason why gas was being used in the many, amenity spaces and uh, or sorry, why electric is being used in the residential spaces but not the amenity spaces?
It, it will be. Um, you mean like an outdoor gas? So it, it's really just like a fire pit on the.
Oh.
So yeah, we, we want to do that in electric.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay.
Because it's outside, but um, yeah, it's, it's really not going to have a, a large service of gas to the boat.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
And there's an existing service there today. So actually, I think everything we're proposing is within that existing gas service.
Okay, then moving on, uh, public spaces. Commissioner Burkey.
Thank you. Want to revisit the pickleball. Um, so this is probably a question for staff, whether Ms. Martin or Mr. Pfeifer. So I heard, Mr. Pfeifer, you explained that if a court like this is above, I think it was 23 feet above street level, it's permitted. So there's no, so in that situation, there's no specific use permit for that particular use for the pickleball. I want to walk through how, how this looks because I've never seen a project like this where pickleball is being proposed and I just kind of want to walk through the conditions, the use, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so because uh, this would be a private pickleball court associated with this residential building, it's not, it doesn't fall into the category of like outdoor recreation or anything like that. It is pertinent to the residential use. So it's not, it doesn't need a separate use permit. Uh, and as long as it meets those overall zoning height requirements, then it's allowed.
What about um, I know it's 23 feet, you know, I know it's up high, um, but we have, we have other residential buildings nearby. I know folks have expressed concerns in other contexts about noise. Are there any restrictions on like hours of use, that sort of thing?
The noise ordinance.
Okay.
Um, would be applicable. And then, I mean, they wouldn't be conditioned to have this pickleball. So if there were issues down the road.
Sure.
You know, this could, you know, I'm sure they could figure out a way to resolve those issues should any arise, if, if there were issues that were within the noise ordinances um, purview.
And I heard you say that there's not going to be any uh, light added. So.
Yeah.
Daylight hours right now would not be feasible because it's dark at 5:15.
Yeah, and to be clear, i- if the pickleball becomes trouble, it will become a larger vegetable garden or a seating area or something like that, obviously. Because if they get sighted over the noise ordinance over it or people can't behave and be nice to their neighbors, then they're going to get their pickleball taken away. Obviously, in a project like this, I mean, these buildings that are, you know, mostly vacant, they're controlled by lenders, they want applicants or applicants, they want buyers of these buildings to close immediately, sale in cash. And so we end up in a fairly quick process. Adaptive reuse has been great for that and staff has been fantastic in meeting, you know, meeting us in the middle basically and keeping this moving. But to that, to that point, a lot of this is sort of like what we've sketched about and we think that this is what we're going to be putting on the rooftop. The goal is to get people into this building in the spring, which is incredibly aggressive. If we can get all of the units ready and open and start to lease to people, that's going to be a victory. And everything that happens on the rooftop might come second. Um, and certainly is somewhat flexible at this point.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Uh, Commissioner Steinberger.
So in basically what you're saying is in the non-unrealistic scenario in which pickleball is a fad and not something that exists for perpetuity, there's a plan for some other use with the space?
Yeah, of course. That rooftop could be adapted because pickleball is, you know, we're talking like a paved surface, some sort of court. There's a lot of amenities. Uses that could.
There's nothing about what you're doing that needs to reserve it purely for pickleball ad infinitum?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had a question about um, some of the new proposed private terraces and I didn't quite understand. It sounded like these spaces may have been open to the public who maybe were just wandering through the property. They weren't officially public spaces, but maybe they were used by the public and so now they're going to be private. Can you talk through that?
Sure. It is uh, kind of interesting uh, when you go through and you look at the old easements and things, but essentially the east side between the two buildings, there's currently a picnicking area that is technically open to the public. Like you could go up the stairs and go up there. There's nothing there. I don't think anyone ever would other than a, a sort of a shortcut, cut through, but the intent is to still keep that. It's really kind of a narrow space too, so it's not like you could do something um, really, you know.
But they're going to be private now, like enclosed somehow. The public wouldn't have access.
So there'll be balconies. They're not necessarily enclosed, but they will be kind of um, well, not enclosed, but they will have like planters to sort of designate the areas for those units specifically. And, and that, those are going to be set back from the existing facade today. So the existing area in between will remain. You can still cut through um, off of 13th or off of 14th, right? So all of that will still be open. We don't plan on changing any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, if anything, it's going to be better now that we remove the connecting bridge, so you can go all the way through if you need to.
Great. Uh, community benefits. Commissioner Guevara.
Um, as I know, it's a streamlined process, so you don't really need to have community benefits, but hopefully you'll surprise me. I know this is not the case, but there are no affordable units there, are there?
There are no.
I know. Wishful thinking. Um, this is for staff. It's sort of the same comment that I made during last month's adaptive reuse um, application, which is, again, I understand we're trying to, you know, there's a lot of competing interests, right? Um, but I do think it's important because of affordable housing would be, or units would be essential, would be ideal to have, you know, close to the metro, close to everything there. Um, as you guys are evaluating this policy going forward, I think it's really important for you guys to keep that into consideration. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments about community benefits? Then finally, process phasing and construction. Commissioner Lantelme.
The north side of the building is on that sloped 14th street, that really steep stroke. But right at the top of that hill is the farmer's market on every Saturday. Do you have any provisions during construction to make sure that the farmer's market isn't going to be adversely impacted, that it will still be able to operate there um, pretty much as it does now?
Yeah, certainly. Uh, you know, our intentions for, for construction and phasing are, you know, other than going into the street, which will primarily be on beach, um, you know, we, we don't really plan to go over our property line and that's someone else's property, so we will not be affecting that area.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so then I think it's time to move to motions. Does that sound right? Okay, um, Commissioner Bagley, do you have a motion for us?
I do. I move the planning commission recommend the county board adopt the adat- attached ordinance for SPLA 25-00029 to permit the conversion of an office building to residential use with modifications for additional density, residential parking, compact parking ratio, setbacks, density exclusions, drive aisle dimensions, and other modifications necessary to achieve the proposed adaptive reuse of the building located at 1320 and 1310 North Courthouse Road, subject to all previously approved conditions of Site Plan Number 153 and the conditions of the attached adaptive reuse Site Plan Amendment Ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Striner, seconds. Okay, um, any discussion on the motion? Okay, then we will go to a vote. Commissioner Lantelme?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel online?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Guevara?
Aye.
Commissioner Burkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Striner?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Amadeo? And I also say aye, so that passes unanimously. Um, thank you very much to Ms. Martin and the applicant and our uh, public speaker for this evening. Uh, we are excited to have another um, adaptive reuse project move forward so we can address some of this uh, commercial vacancy in Arlington and make these spaces um, uh, activated and, and positive contributions to the community. So thank you for that. Madam Clerk, can you call our next agenda item, please?
Yes, item number three is the Green Building Incentive Program. This is an informational item only. And we have, I believe, Paul Roman to discuss this item this evening from DES.
I will uh, just do a quick hello. Um, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you Chair Peterson and members of the commission for the opportunity tonight. I'm Jason Papa Cosma, uh, Bureau Chief for the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management. I'm here tonight with Steve Burr, who manages our Arlington Initiative to Rethink Energy Program, and Paul Roman, the Green Building Program Manager, who will uh, walk us through tonight's presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Paul.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's great to be here with you all tonight. Uh, as my colleague Jason mentioned, my name is Paul Roman and I serve as the Green Building Program Manager for Arlington County. Uh, I work within Arlington's Initiative to Rethink Energy Team, or AIR for short, uh, which is part of the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management. This briefing, uh, through this evening, we're here to provide a briefing on the informational item for the Green Building Incentive Policy Update. This briefing will give you an overview of the proposed policy changes, how they align with the county's broader climate objectives, and the feedback we've received throughout stakeholder uh, and community engagement. We appreciate your time and interest in this work and we look forward to sharing the details of this policy update and answering any questions you may have at the end of the presentation. Tonight, we'll start with the bottom line upfront. When we last spoke with you all in Q4 of 2024, we presented at the time to LRPC uh, the Version 1 draft proposal for the GBIP update. Leading up to that briefing, we conducted additional public engagement to inform the development of the Version 1 draft proposal. Following the LRPC briefing, we continued those discussions and outreach efforts and the feedback we received throughout that process has helped guide the refinements that bring us to where we are tonight, uh, providing an informational update on Version 2 of the policy draft. Based on the additional engagement, we updated the draft policy to represent a balanced and achievable approach. With Version 2, we stayed focused on what can truly be put into practice and a voluntary policy that supports participation while maintaining ambition. Staff believes this updated draft provides a practical balance, one that developers can realistically adopt while continuing to advance Arlington's climate goals. And it also reflects current market and fiscal conditions, ensuring Arlington remains at the forefront of voluntary green building leadership. The revised proposal is structured with a new construction pathway and it's been modernized to align with the U.S. Green Building Council's new LEED Version 5 certification. We've also taken the approach to streamline the green building baseline prerequisites to focus on the most critical priorities, thus being energy efficiency, decarbonization, EV charging, and renewable energy, uh, which in return, we anticipate this approach providing greater clarity and ensuring that each project delivers measurable outcomes. And finally, uh, we're taking a forward-looking approach by testing innovative concepts through pilot programs, one of which proposes to pilot passive house feasibility assessments and related energy modeling, and a second pilot led by the county's AIR team that would explore retrofit opportunities in existing buildings to broaden program outreach and further reduce greenhouse gas emissions across the county's existing building stock. Excite, please? Before we get into the details of the stakeholder engagement and, and the policy revisions, we'd like to start by sharing a quick snapshot of how the green building incentive policy has performed historically. Uh, this chart shows the number of site plans approved in Arlington since the first adoption of the GBIP. The green bars represent site plans that opted into the GBIP, while the gray bar shows site plans that did not pursue density, additional density through the policy. And the orange trend line indicates the average participation of site plans opting into the GBIP each year, uh, but the historical average participation rate is near 60%. Uh, the key point is that participation metrics are influenced by a variety of factors, including market and economic conditions, priorities among other community benefits, or alternative ways for projects to achieve density. Uh, but looking at the last three to four years of the data, we see that projects that do opt-in generally pursue the lower FAR tiers. So with this in mind, it was important that the update not only drives higher participation, uh, but also supports a broader market transformation. Moving on to the second round of public engagement. This slide shows our outreach timeline. As mentioned earlier, we continued engagement following the LRPC briefing. Prior to that and after our county board discussions in early 2024, we met with a broad range of stakeholders that included C2E2, EcoAction, the Sierra Club, the Forestry and Natural Resources Commission, Wildlife Specialists, and NAOP, along with several market rate and affordable housing developers. During this time, environmental advocates emphasized the importance of aligning the GBIP update with the county's climate commitments. They called for a fossil fuel phase-out, advocated for stronger targets around EV charging, embodied carbon and tree canopy coverage, higher standards for bird-friendly grazing, and encouraged the inclusions and creative, inclusions of creative incentives to drive more ambitious outcomes. As for the development community, we heard general concerns about rising construction and financing costs, as well as feedback that the proposed financial incentives may not provide sufficient motivation given current market conditions. Developers also noted that some certification pathways remain challenging to finance, that the value of additional density incentives has lessened over time, and that certain based on requirements may not always align with project or tenant needs. In the second half of 2024, we released the policy for public comment and received feedback that was generally consistent with what we heard from advocates during the targeted outreach earlier in that year. This past spring, we held targeted listening sessions with NAOP and environmental advocate groups to take a deeper dive into key policy areas. Then in August, uh, we hosted an in-person GBIP roundtable, bringing together NAOP members and representatives from environmental organizations, including C2E2, EcoAction, and the Sierra Club. At the roundtable, we covered five discussion topics, including market challenges in relation to the county's climate goals, electrification and performance-based pathways as alternatives to LEED. Uh, following that roundtable, environmental advocates reiterated the same messages uh, they'd shared throughout the public engagement process, emphasizing that the GBIP should better align with the county's climate goals and commitments, and they summarized their messaging to five areas of focus. Uh, energy efficiency, building electrification, renewable energy, reduced embodied carbon, and EV readiness. Uh, and developers again raise the same concerns about cost pressures, diminishing returns on density incentives, and uncertainty about new certification pathways. Uh, but ultimately, the roundtable provided an opportunity for both sides to be face-to-face, share their challenges, opportunities, and perspectives on the GBIP, and identify areas of common ground on various topics. Uh, following that discussion, we received feedback that both parties appreciated the opportunity to engage and a general consensus emerged. Uh, that being that both parties want the GBIP to succeed, uh, but it's about finding the right balance for a voluntary program. Coming out of the additional public engagement, the question was then, how are we incorporating the feedback into Version 2 of the policy proposal while also addressing changing market conditions? In response to the public feedback and evolving market conditions, the revised policy streamlines the program of fewer, clearer pathways and targeted incentives that balance ambitious green building goals. It prioritizes energy efficiency and carbon reduction in the green building baseline prerequisites or refining those that overlap with other county processes or are already addressed through LEED V5 credits. And the update also incorporates pilots for FIS feasibility studies, integrates CPACE financing for retrofits through a proposed AIR-led existing buildings program, and aligns energy efficiency recommendations with the new adaptive reuse zoning ordinance and administrative regulations. Before we get into the details of the new construction pathway revisions, here's an overview of what we'll cover. The updated policy continues to use FAR bonuses as the primary incentive, with LEED Version 5 as the main green building standard and the International Living Future Institute's zero-carbon certification as an alternative. The revised framework targets the most impactful areas, energy reduction, electrification, renewable energy, EV infrastructure, and embodied carbon, balancing ambitious results with practical feasibility for developers. Uh, but overall, it incorporates the latest LEED V5 advancements, strengthen, strengthens the appeal of ILFI, aligns prerequisites with county processes, and introduces performance-based certification options. And additionally, we are piloting passive house feasibility studies and energy modeling to better understand how the standard can be applied locally. Here's the proposed new construction pathway for Version 2 of the policy draft. Uh, we recognize this slide may warrant a bit more time, uh, and we're happy to come back to it at the end of the presentation if needed. But we're proposing three FAR levels, 0.25, 0.35, and 0.45, and removing the 0.55 and 0.7 levels. Based on review, aside from one development, no other projects have taken bonus density at those higher levels of FAR, nor do we anticipate applicants soon utilizing the higher tiers. Starting with 0.25 FAR, applicants would need LEED Version 5 Gold, Energy Optimization Performance Improvement, baseline prerequisites, Energy Star Certification, and two items from the extra list. The main updates from 2020 are moving from LEED Version 4 to LEED Version 5 Gold, updating the Energy Star Certification Score from 75 to 80, updating energy performance improvements based on ASUR and 90.1 changes, and including the two extra list items. For the 0.35 FAR tier, there are two options here. Option one is similar to 0.25 FAR, but with three extra list items, updated Energy Star Certification Score, and updated energy performance improvement percentage. Option two is a performance-based path. Applicants would be, applicants would be required to achieve International Living Future Institute's ILFI Zero Carbon Certification, Benchmark Energy Use for 10 years, and meet the updated EVSE and EV Ready requirements. And in addition to the 0.35 FAR for the second option, we're proposing to offer a county-supported case study and county-supported energy benchmarking. case study and county-supported energy benchmarking. For the 0.45 FAR tier, this also has two options. Option 1 requires LEED Version 5 Platinum, which requires building electrification, updated Energy Star Certification Score, four extra list items, and updated Energy Performance Improvement Percentage. The second option requires ILFI Zero Carbon with post-occupancy recommissioning as the additive requirement compared to the 0.35 FAR tier. And the additional incentive for this option includes reduced green building permitting requirements. Specifically, this would be the green building documentation required at various permit stages, and does not apply collectively to other county departments who engage with site plans. And lastly, we're proposing to fund a FIES feasibility study and associated energy modeling up to 25,000 per project in exchange for providing the results to the county, but in the coming slides, we'll dive into more detail about this FIES pilot. Now let's move on to the baseline prerequisites and how we reviewed and refined them. We conducted a comprehensive review to align the baseline prerequisites with LEED Version 5 credits and existing county programs while retaining or updating key requirements. The focus remains on energy efficiency, carbon reduction, and EV infrastructure. In relation to EV infrastructure, we're proposing a county definition for EV charging and EV ready that goes beyond LEED where needed, and even surpasses what many of our peer jurisdictions are doing based on our benchmarking review. And for bird-friendly materials, we're evaluating the inclusion of this baseline prerequisite consistent with the LEED V5 credit, which applies up to 50 feet above ground, and coordinating with staff to ensure compatibility with Arlington's retail transparency standards. But overall, we're retaining eight baseline prerequisites, down from 11 in the current 2020 policy. Aside from the ones previously mentioned, the remainder include refrigerant leakage, Energy Star appliances, and water sense fixtures, light pollution reduction, renewable energy, and energy benchmarking. Moving on, here are the details of the passive house, also known as FIES feasibility study assessment pilot. This would be available for any project that's pursuing additional density through the green building incentive policy. We're proposing to fund a FIES feasibility study and associated energy modeling up to 25K per project, and in return, applicants would share the study results with the county. If you're not familiar with a FIES feasibility study and associated energy modeling, the yielded results would provide a full modeling report, the modeled energy use intensity, projected energy savings, carbon reductions, cost delta analyses, and the feasibility recommendations and estimated cost premiums. Participation would be completely optional, and we'd cap the applicants on a rolling basis, preferably capped at about six to 10 projects total. But the goal here is to generate real, locally informed data that helps both the county and developers understand what it looks like to apply a performance-based standard like FIES in Arlington, and it also provides valuable education and hands-on experience for a diverse range of project team members, from architects and engineers to owners and consultants, helping to broader market capacity for this kind of work. And to support this pilot, we put in a budget request to use approximately $200,000 from the Climate Action Fund for consideration. Here are the details for the existing buildings pilot program. Similar to the FIES pilot, we're asking through a budget request to leverage a portion of the available funding in the Climate Action Fund for consideration, with an anticipated budget of around $200,000. This pilot would be a cohort-based program that would target around eight to 12 buildings, and this would come out of the AIR work plan rather than the GBIP policy. We'd be using a combination of staff time and consultant support for technical assistance, along with a portion of the requested funding for the energy audits, while also promoting the county's new CPACE ordinance. But the goal of this pilot is provide education, technical support, energy benchmarking, and an energy audit program for existing buildings, all of which build on elements of the county's previous EPA Environmental Justice Government-to-Government grant. And before we wrap up this briefing, we wanted to give an update on adaptive reuse in the context of green buildings. We started in 2024 by including adaptive reuse as a proposed pathway in the Version 1 policy draft, and now we're coordinating with Arlington Economic Development and CPHD regarding the forthcoming administrative regulation and related green building recommendations, given the county board adoption of Article 15.5 of the zoning ordinance in November of 2024. Moving forward, in coordination with AED and CPHD, we acknowledge the objective of the adopted article and trade-offs for economic viability and ambitious green building standards, so we'll work closely with staff on recommendations regarding energy efficiency and carbon reduction measures in relation to those trade-offs. To tie everything together, the updated policy modernizes the new construction pathway by incorporating LEED V5 advancements and streamlining baseline prerequisites to focus on energy efficiency, decarbonization, EV infrastructure, and renewable energy. We're also introducing pilots, one to introduce the feasibility of designing and constructing the passive house in Arlington and further advancing market transformation, and the second, targeting existing buildings through retrofit opportunities in alignment with available funding resources. But based on the revisions, this policy is structured to succeed in the current market over the next three to four years, while remaining flexible to adapt as conditions evolve over the next five to seven years. Overall, this policy drives meaningful progress towards the county's climate goals, positioning Arlington as a continued leader in the voluntary green building programs. It combines ambitious innovation with practical, market-ready solutions, ensuring developers can engage successfully while the county achieves measurable environmental impact. And in short, it's a policy that works for the community, for the market, and for a sustainable future in Arlington. And with that, that is the end of our presentation. I want to thank you once again, Commissioners, for your time this evening, and I'll pause for any further clarifications from my colleagues here before we take questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So tonight, this item is an informational item, so we will not be taking a vote on it. We will likely hear this item again next month, where we will be able to take a vote on it. So for tonight, we'll just be able to ask questions, provide feedback, so that maybe possibly changes could be added to the program, so that when it does come back to us, we are ready to vote on it. Commissioner, will you tell me, did you have questions or?
Yeah, I have one question. Will this require additional staff hours over what is already being done under the current pathways? With these, this proposal, these changes, will that increase, add to the workload, or will it just replace the existing workload?
I can kick off that. I think that the policy itself will be roughly in line with what the level of support is now for the program and the traditional pathway. I think the existing buildings pathway will be some additional workload for the AIR team and consultant support. I think that that will, and maybe some marginal from the FIES pilots as well, but the traditional pathway, I think, should be pretty well aligned with the current level of support for the program needed from staff.
Thank you.
So yeah, we can just open it up to questions from the group about any topics. Commissioner Striner.
So on the FIES piece, I'm assuming the sort of return on investment is that, you know, we pay $25,000 per project, and then we get the information back to use modeling and sort of other use cases and site plans that we moved throughout. I'm curious, why, what was the sort of reasoning for landing on 25,000 up to 25,000 per building? And, you know, what else, what else, if I didn't cover it, do you all seek to gain from that? What's like the return on investment from that, for the county's perspective?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Commissioner. $25,000 was modeled after the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so their program MassSave, which now FIES is part of a pathway, is built into their code. But when MassSave first introduced their pilot program for FIES, $25,000 was the amount for the feasibility studies and the associated energy modeling, and then aligned with other benchmarking review that we did with other jurisdictions and China, just the general cost of what that feasibility and modeling assessment would take. In terms of your question for return on investment, you know, the main one being for the county to inform future policy and to see how feasible it is to, you know, build to FIES standards in Arlington to design and construct. But I think too, for the developers, to take away that feasibility study and associated energy modeling, and possibly build in passive house measures into their design. They may not fully build to FIES and design and construct. We may not get a project that actually kicks off the ground through just a feasibility assessment, but we would hope that they would also find those studies valuable in terms of looking at the, even the incremental costs when comparing cost premiums to a LEED certification or just a baseline code, and to seeing, you know, whether it's high-performance glazing or a different passive measure that they can then implement into their own design and construction per project.
Okay, thank you. I have another one. That's all right. So on the existing buildings pilot program, I really think this is an interesting angle because you have so many of these buildings that are built decades ago and are not. Is there, I know this is, this is a part of an EPA grant, so I'm assuming that the timeframe is sort of limited to however much funding is provided there, but is there any sort of, has there been any kind of discussions about building this sort of program into, and the same goes for the FIES as well, are there any sort of discussions about building that into the sort of county's baseline budget, or is this more of just viewed as a one-time thing, you know, we're just going to run this grant funding out, we'll see, see what we get, and we're just going to move on from there?
Yeah, I can chime in. And unfortunately, the EPA grant that we referenced was terminated, but we had a lot of good goals in there, largely around sort of building the capacity around existing buildings, what tools we could provide them, and then also with different incentives or financing mechanisms. And so I think we're trying to take a lot of the work that we had there and scale it down a bit, and just really try to learn, build the relationships, and then also get the energy audits and get the real, into the buildings that are out there that we know are a large, you know, the largest sector of our greenhouse gas inventory. So we're hoping to learn a lot and sort of refine and know that this is a sector that we really need to do some, do some work in, but really start in a pilot phase to get that information and sort of right-size what the program could be.
Awesome. Right, yeah, that's great to hear. Yeah, I'm glad you all are keeping that going.
It's an interesting study, a proposal. Would the, would it expand to smaller multifamily buildings too, that are not necessarily more than 75,000 square feet?
I think that we would, so that's the way that we currently have it designed, but I think that we would want to go out and see who's sort of a willing participant in the market, and if there is a subset of buildings, you know, seeing if there's an opportunity there. We are also, as a part of the AIR work stream, is retooling our residential program, and so, and there's obviously a big multifamily component of that for folks who live in multifamily buildings, whether renters or owners. I think right now, we're trying to target the larger buildings through this, but then also having opportunities for the, for the smaller residential buildings as well.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify. So the pilot is that an applicant could earn a $25,000 kind of cash rebate?
So we would be offering $25,000 in the form of a grant, I would say. Still some details to iron out, but yeah, $25,000 to that applicant in addition to them pursuing bonus density through the program, but using that $25,000 for the feasibility study for FIES and the associated energy modeling.
Okay. And for the types of projects that we generally see that are multimillion dollars, do we feel like a $25,000 grant is sufficient motivation?
We, so we had a lot of discussion around that, and I think that the feasibility is to see what's possible and sort of at the beginning phase, and then see what those incremental costs are, see what those benefits are, and having that discussion with FIES being not really mature as a green building certification in the area. We really wanted to get that data and sort of start those conversations, and also the sort of market awareness too. So that's some of the other benefits we're seeing. I would love for folks to say, hey, yes, let's take on these incremental costs, but right now, we're just trying to collect the data, start the conversation, build up the awareness around sort of these performance-based certifications in the area.
Just as a little finer point on that, we're still kind of refining the details, but I think, I think the goal is that it wouldn't be money passing hands from the county to the developer, is that we would fund the assessment. So, you know, what we're hoping is that they would voluntary join us in that, so that they give us all the, you know, the data that's needed to do it, but it's more about doing the study and the assessment, not so much as a sort of cash incentive model, if that makes sense.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Commissioner Amadeo, do you have your light on? Do you want to have a question? Okay, Commissioner Guevara.
Fighting with this.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. A question, with your discussions with developers for adaptive reuse sort of policy that we have now, were they welcome to, were they open, I guess, what was their reception to incorporating some of these elements into adaptive reuse model?
Great question. So in Version 1 of the draft proposal, we originally included adaptive reuse as a pathway and provided a, or proposed a financial incentive attached to that regarding the newly-adapted zoning ordinance for adaptive reuse. Those are conversations that we're holding internally with Arlington Economic Development and our counterparts in CPHD, just going based on the, you know, green building recommendations moving forward. I can tell you right now, going through a site plan review process for adaptive reuse projects, we are holding conversations with developers, you know, based on green building recommendations and, you know, just on a voluntary basis, what they're installing, whether that's EV charging that may be already existing, upgrading their facade or envelope, glazing, whatever it may be. But I think right now, we're getting more of a grasp and understanding of what developers are willing to take up in terms of green building sustainability, and then passing on those recommendations to our counterparts internally.
Having those conversations, it would be great if, you know, we could encourage or incentivize somehow for more green roofs or solar panels, like you mentioned earlier. I think the last applicant was more, you know, they already had EV charging, they have all these elements, so just making sure that others are adopting that pathway, I think, would be really important. Thanks.
So I have a question. So it sounds like the impetus for this refresh is that currently we're seeing about 60% of site plans that are taking advantage of our existing policy, and we want to see the other 40% take advantage too. So a few questions. Are we lowering the standards of the GBIP program with the idea that, you know, the lower standards are fine because that other 40% will make up, like, overall for the community to be able to achieve our CEP goals? Or are we saying, look, those 60% that are already doing it, we're still going to hold them to the same high standard, we're just giving some additional channels for this 40% that isn't choosing to take it up, so that maybe we can get, we can make some progress or some additional progress to our CEP goals? And are we, do we also have in mind what success looks like? If you achieved 80% of our goal of, you know, uptick in site plans, you will consider that, you know, we did the right thing with the CEP? If 100% of projects are now doing GBIP, are we thinking that's success, or are we saying, oh, maybe we could have made the standards even higher? How will you assess, you know, if we've got the right standards?
I can, I can lead off. That's, that's a really good question, or series of questions. I think one, and I'll have, certainly want to hear from Paul and Steve as well, I think one thing we were thinking a lot about is, you want to set this bar so you can't just step over it, because it's supposed to be a performance, you know, incentive program with a, with a reward, but you don't want to set it too high that there isn't voluntary opt-in, and that's always, I think, been the dynamic. And so, at least from my perspective, I mean, it's not so much that 60% average participation rate is, is not sufficient, I think it's just a marker of, that some projects choose to participate and some have other means or other objectives in terms of how their business model is and other, or other ways they can earn density. So I will lead off with that first, just noting that balance of where we set it, but I, I think Steve and Paul have some things they could add into that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great question and something we've talked about a lot, sort of that balance and making sure that we can sort of optimize the participation plus sort of how, how much energy and carbon savings developers are doing. I think that's one piece. Another piece is that LEED is being updated, and so the LEED standard and LEED Version 5, there is, it's more stringent, and so incorporating that and that sort of new framework and sort of some, and a lot of the benefits there, and then also an opportunity from the streamlining perspective with the baseline conditions to say, if there's, we can still get to the same outcomes, but have a bit of a more streamlined process, let's, let's look at that too. So I think that those were a couple other contributing factors and looking at the update.
Yeah, the only thing that I'll add on, well, two things. One is my colleague Steve just mentioned, USGBC's new LEED Version 5 Certification. It is an It is an advancement over LEED version four and certainly version 4.1, which was never validated rating system anyway. But it focuses on embodied carbon. It takes into account electrification. So now for every project that's pursuing electrification, if you're not pursuing platinum, you're still required to complete a electrification ready report for your projects. So we think that speaks to, you know, some of what our environmental advocates were seeking to through this GBIP policy, which would outline a narrative in terms of feasibility moving forward. If your building one day chose to fully electrify. You know, again, it's about balancing a voluntary program in a delineral state. And I think just aside from the point of metrics and uptake, as I mentioned at the beginning of the briefing, it was also about broader market transformation. I think when you see the advancements of LEED version five, the discussions we've been having with developers and our environmental stakeholders, there's certainly more coming down the road for, for Arlington. But, you know, we certainly believe that this updated version of this policy certainly aligns with, you know, the current market where we are in three to four years, but to also be flexible in five to eight years down the road.
Thank you. Any additional questions about the proposal?
Just the adaptive reuse part, the, because it's creating a loophole where they're getting credits for reusing a building, but not really updating the standards. And this would actually require, I mean, just based on the project that we just, because I was really concerned about some of the stuff I was seeing on the proposal. And so I wonder if this would be one way to, to incentivize, although 25,000, I wonder, that's enough. But anyway. I think it's the, it's a very encouraging beginning for adaptive reuse and to get them to, to update some of the thermal envelope. That's obviously the problem with these buildings that have been sitting there for a long time. And some of them are probably, I don't know how much update they're going to do in the previous project that I think, you know, this program would actually incentivize.
Thank you. Okay. So I think that's it from our commission. So thank you very much for your presentation this evening. And we look forward to seeing you at our next hearing or soon thereafter where we can hear the presentation again and take a vote. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I think that takes us to commission business. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay. So we have minutes to address first. You received both of them by email on Friday. We have the September minutes and the October minutes. I did send some updates to the September minutes. Those have been added. Just one of the votes was missing. That has already been updated and a small typo. So I will ask my colleagues for your unanimous consent to approve the September and October 2025 Planning Commission meeting minutes. I think if we do unanimous consent, as long as you don't say anything, it's fine. You don't have to protest it or. Do you have something you want to say about October? Oh, okay. So yeah, just don't talk unless you have a concern about something. Of course, you're always welcome to talk, but if you have, if you have a concern, please raise it. And if you don't, then we can all be silent and I will ask for everyone's unanimous consent. And I have not heard any concern. So those meeting minutes are approved. Mr. Pfeiffer, do you have any staff updates?
We have no staff update this month. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Steinberger, do you have an LRPC report?
We had a meeting last week and I'm trying to remember when our next one is. It's what I was just looking at my calendar for.
I think it's next week.
December, I think we're at the 10th.
No, you have a comp plan update meeting, don't you? Next week, maybe?
November 12th. Okay. Or maybe it's next week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I have that on my calendar. Thank you. Yes. So we were doing the comp plan update next week on the 12th.
Okay. And if I may just add, so we are doing the comp plan update for anybody who is still listening. We have a survey that is open for another week or so where the members of the public can provide feedback about what they're, what they'd like to see the comp plan update introductory chapter look like. So if you are still listening, please go online and fill out that survey form if you have not already.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add? LRPC?
Nope.
And there are no rosters. Is that correct? Correct. Okay. SPRC report, Commissioner Bagley?
We have had numerous changes and additions, and I will send out a list of those. Thank you to everybody who has stepped up also for the adaptive reuse. We will not be having a chair for these, but we will have a PC liaison who will then take notes and then be able to give a report. It won't be a leadership role or anything like that, but just moving forward and make it a little easier for us. So I will send out an updated report and we have, I do believe we have a SPRC coming up.
Yeah, we have the Lucky Gardens first SPRC is on November 13th. So after you attend the comp plan LRPC, you can join us the very next night for the Lucky Gardens SPRC.
Awesome.
November 13th. Thanks.
Isn't there also a walking tour on the 14th?
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn Tellme. There is a walking tour on Friday, the 14th, I believe, at noon. And Lucky Gardens, for those not familiar, is right off of Langston Boulevard, right near the Lee Heights Shops. So thank you for the reminder.
And we have not yet received calendar invitations for those two events. So perhaps staff can get us on our calendar.
We will get right on that. Staff will get right on that.
Thank you. And there are no rosters for SPRC? Correct. Perfect. Commissioner Striner, Zoko report, please.
We have an upcoming meeting for Zoko, actually. Hold on. I can tell you about the transportation thing first. It's a little more on top of mind. We do have a, let's see, hold on. Now I'm unprepared too. Yeah, we've got, we've got a zoning committee meeting coming up. I believe we have more discussion on signage. That was a very exciting one earlier this year. So we'll be digging back into that topic. And as it relates to the transportation plan update, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago. And I've let you all know that there's, there's homework due back to me by the first of December. Because we're now entering phase three of the engagement and we're, and we're sort of kind of looking at like a, like a funnel. We started out really broad and high vision, you know, big picture ideas. And now we're starting to narrow in on specific policy priorities and tierings and what specific transportation maps are going to look like across the county. So if your feed, your feedback is becoming more and more important as we're going along because we're starting to get into that really nitty gritty space. And so also in addition to the homework there, the phase three engagement form, again, for anyone who's listening at home is open as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Striner. Form based code ob, Commissioner Burkey.
Yeah, two quick things. So you obviously heard the, the use permit for the renovations on Barcroft. So that's been recommended. And then we also heard, if you all remember the Fillmore Gardens development. So this was called the Elliott a couple of years back. And then that unfortunately did not come to pass and that was withdrawn. And so now there's a new form based code application. I like to call it Penrose 2.0 because if it happens, it completes the square there. So that was before the advisory working group last month. Generally, folks are very excited to see that project come to fruition. That will come before planning commission, I believe in December soon. But long story short on that one, there's not, they're not proposing to have the large kind of or medium sized space for a grocer. Instead, we're looking at some smaller, more bite, I don't say bite sized, but smaller retail spaces along Columbia Pike, completing some of the, the grid there as well. And then obviously, you know, providing a lot of housing. So we'll be excited to get into that. Thanks.
Thank you. Have we addressed all of our PC business, Madam Clerk? Okay. Well, thank you again to staff, the applicant that we had tonight and applicants and to our public speaker. Tonight's hearing summary will be presented to the county board at their upcoming meeting by Commissioner Robertson. So this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why aren't we doing Monday night, you know?